Okay, it's called this meeting order. Town Council meeting, this is our council work session on March thirty first, six oh three PM, or twenty one, so this ends quickly. You'll know why. This time, does anyone want to like to give the indication? So, Bob, for the.
Yes, break. My gracious, we am in heaven, Father, as we come before you there as morning prayer. We ask for our forgiveness and our mercies. We ask, Lord, that no one be injured during this weather, that you protect each one, guide each one, and forgive each one for their sins. Let us enter into this meeting and do the best answers of the town. For in our name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks, sir. Pledge of allegiance. We're being brought here with.
Okay, let's stand. Swift flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, new business. Item A, I'm going to do a discussion related to the annual action items for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, American Rescue Plan funds and possible refinancing of the twenty fifteen revenue bond for water sewer system improvements. And I'll turn it over to Tepa Do, Town Manager.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, all this will be gone by the time we get done. And I want to, Councilman McCain, thank you for the recommendation from Ms. Holston on the food. I got a chance to eat half my sandwich, and it was really good, so. I told her we'll be using her some more. Easy to work with, so, for that. Oh, as we, before we begin, before we begin, you know, we've had a lot of projects going on. We were reviewing annual action items from this past year and evaluating all the projects that we had going on. We recently opened some bids for the wastewater treatment plant, or just evaluating the amount of money that it's going to cost to get these improvements and balancing the grants and what's going to be out of pocket that we need to do. And then comes, then comes in the American Rescue Plan funding that just kind of came to us and was dropped on us, or hasn't been dropped in our lap as of yet, but we've been notified of it. But still a lot of direction left to come on that. So, as we put this together tonight, and we were just thinking about the best way to piece this together, to present this, ideas that we have, recommendations and thoughts that we have, moving into fiscal year twenty twenty one and evaluating these projects. Tonight, we're going to start with just evaluating the projects that we, just listing out those projects that we currently have going on, because that'll kind of tie into the annual action items and from the staff recommendation. Then we're going to go through the staff recommended annual action items for this upcoming year. The next thing we're going to do is we're going to bring each of the up speed on, on the bids that we received for those wastewater treatment plant project projects and what that means as it relates to this. And then the next thing is, how do we make this happen? And there's a possible refinancing of the twenty fifteen revenue bond that we could do to make some of this a reality. And the last thing is, how does the American Rescue Plan assist us with our needs and how can it fit with annual action items based on the information we have now, which is very limited? And then we'll kind of open it up for full discussion on annual action refinance and everything else that you guys would like to discuss. So, to begin with, this is a, I'm not going to go down every one of these word by word and list them. I think each of you can roll through and read them. These are all the projects that are underway right now that we're working on. Some may be done very soon, some may take some time and carry over into next year or maybe even the year after that, depending on how construction goes. Y'all need any more time on this? Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us which one might happen very soon?
Okay, so, right now, we know the town on Park Engineering's going on. That's something that's going to probably take upwards to six months to get to construction documents, just because of the size and scope of work for those. Obviously, we're in the process of property acquisition for Water Unity Park, and we'll have two out of the three here soon, and we're going to be working on that third portion. The town entrance signs are almost designed, they're formulating the construction documents for them as we speak. The Pine Street parking, we know engineering and design is probably about half complete on that at this point, but we've got the wiring portion, the demo started, slight work yesterday, but some building demo today. And then, Birdie Pump Station's about to finalize the FOG program. We're in the notification phase with, and having conversations with businesses at this point. Water project, we all know, is just, is still ongoing, and we'll be having to come back around to that here in the, in the near future. And then, collection system, GIS, I mean, that looking at probably four to six months for that. The infiltration inflow study, probably about the same thing, another four to six months. Oak Street repaving, once they get railroad permitting on that, that'll happen in a matter of four or five days. That will be complete. This right here, we'll talk a little bit more about in just a little bit. And then, the five-year lease purchase, you know, we're, we could go into August or September before we have all the vehicles because of.
They still start getting some.
We'll have some soon, but some that we're having to order could be August, September, before we, before we can see those vehicles. So, rolling into staff recommendation for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, annual action items. What you see in black are those, those projects that are on the table right now. I could tell you, between myself, Jay, and Tim Scholber on, on all these projects, this is more than enough to keep us busy. We've been project management mode, trying to balance all these projects, and it's a lot on us. A lot of what you're going to see right now is continuing progress and, and for this next year, and getting, seeing these projects through to completion. What you see in green are some things that, that we are offering up as new things to take on this year, that being proceeding forward with funding and installation of an automated meter reading system. This is something I have had most of you come to me about and say, what's the deal with automated meter reading systems? And the reason being is people are hitting you about water bills and, and leaks that happen, and why aren't we doing this, or, you know, meters weren't read here, and this and that. So, but, we've had this on the annual action item list for about four years now, but I think I would like to see us have a serious conversation, and there's a plan for that in what we're presenting tonight.
You know that that's going to increase folks' water bill. And that's probably one of the reasons why we, you know, the previous council never really moved hard on that.
Well, and we got a slide in just a few minutes about automated meter reading, if we can.
But you do know it's going to raise the water bill.
Well, I, I think it's going to stop giving free water.
Well, I mean, a difference without a distinction. Honestly, it's going to raise the people's water bill. I know we need to raise some revenue, but, you know, we've raised their taxes, their property taxes, we didn't pass, we didn't pass on their savings, and now you're talking about raising the water bill.
No, I'm not talking about raising water bills, I'm talking about just moving forward with the better system. But again, we've got a slide on that, and we'll talk a little bit more in depth about that in a few minutes. One of the things that we would like to do this year is, beginning January one, twenty twenty two, we can bond off of the hospitality tax at that point. We'll have had three years' worth of revenues to show to be able to move forward with bonding. I would like, as an annual action item for this year, to see us begin that process and start evaluating, how much can we bond, which projects would be included in the initial bond, and that balance between paying a bond, paying the wood age tax, but keeping enough of that in our bank account to do things as they become available. One of the things we've thrown on is consideration of funding a one-year pilot full-service comment, comment bus round in town. And this is something we'll discuss a little bit later in the American Rescue Plan, I'll get a little bit more on what our thought is with that. And fund and complete engineering and design for both downtown business districts and Water Unity Park, move forward with those. And the last thing is employee bonuses slash cost of living pay increases. All right? All right, at this point, as we move into more detailed discussion about a few of the items that are on this list tonight, mostly regarding the utility projects that are on there, we want to start with an overview of the utility funds that we currently have in the bank. Our reserve account is at seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. I don't recommend that we touch these funds, as this is reserve funds for our utility. Reserve funds for our utility accounts. The USDA debt service, that five hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifteen is the one annual payment towards the water project, and it's already set aside, which is a requirement by them. If we had to, we could utilize this money, but I wouldn't recommend it, because at some point, we're going to have to put that money back in as the water project moves forward in the future. That leaves the capital improvement and impact fee account, which is currently at one point three million dollars. Now, we did put down here, we recently paid two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars out of that this, in the month of March, towards a couple of the proof projects and grant projects, but we are expecting to get that reimbursement back from Lexington County here in the next couple of weeks. So, that account should be going back up to about one point five million dollars. We will circle back to this once we, once we get through a little bit further. So, moving on to automated meter reading. Again, I've, I've had a lot of you come in and us discuss automated meter reading, just due to the complaints you've received and, and, and then talking through the challenges that we face with regards to, to meter reading. I will tell you, it's estimated, and until we went out and did an RFP for this, we wouldn't know an exact cost, but the estimates that we've come up with are about one point five million for a full system install of our entire system. The automated meter reading systems are, have a twenty-year warranty. The biggest thing, the biggest advantage to it is it eliminates human error and improves efficiency. Unfortunately, we have two employees, and it takes them, I think, sixteen days, eight-hour days, to, to read over three thousand meters each one. A lot of these meters are covered in, in sand and dirt. They have to battle the weather elements, and I'll be honest, sometimes we have found meters that simply haven't been read, and there is a human element that comes into play with this. What an automated reader, automated meter reading system does is it removes that human error element. We don't have to deal with that. It does streamline the billing processes, which improves efficiency in the office, but more importantly, it improves customer service. One of the best features is it has, that it has, is leak detection. If water continuously runs for four hours and doesn't cut off, it can email you, text you, it will email us and the office and send alerts to us and let us know that a possible leak is at this residence, and we can send someone down there proactively before their water bill gets increased to something that they can't afford. Very proactive approach to leak detection. Real-time monitoring of accounts, the customer engagement portal, people will have the ability to log on to their account, go in, and they can see their water use up to two, three months by the hour. So, if they want to know why their bill has gone up, or why their bill has gone down, they can go on this quarter and portal, and they can evaluate their usage. That is one of the biggest features. I've talked with a bunch of people that put these systems in, and, and it's amazing how many people log in continuously to their portal and evaluate their information. So, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Kane. I will tell you, most cities that, that install these see anywhere from three to ten percent increase in revenue, simply because of lost water that's, quite frankly, been given away free, because meters get old. And what happens, just to explain it in a nutshell real quick, these meters that are thirty years old, what happens is, over time, the gears in them wear down. And if, there's a big difference between cutting a shower on or cutting a sprinkler on in the yard, which is high-flow water usage, that's going to be read. But over time, as the meters get old, wear down, if you cut a bathroom faucet on, the speed and, and hardness of the flow through that meter, meter may not be enough to trigger the meter to, to record it, and that water's being given for free.
Look, a couple, there's two things I want to ask you about. One is that, you know, automatic meter reader, fine, but what about replacing the pipes in the ground? Because what, you know, we have, we do experience a lot of pipes that rupture, and we, you charging people, we've already raised the water bills twenty-seven point nine percent, right? No, without a water claim, so we promise. And now, you're going to increase your efficiency, which is another way of saying, you know, we're going to raise revenue, so people are going to pay more. And so, my question is, why not replace the pipes in the ground? If you're going to do something with tax relief, give the money back to the people, why don't we look at how, how we can replace the pipes going into these people's houses so that you have better quality water, before you start talking about charging them more for water?
Well, not all, not all meters, not all lines that are in the ground simply because they're.
I say all of them.
No, but, but our whole system is old, and it's in the ground, and we do have trouble areas pop up in places, and we, we think we're doing a better job now of being.
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about so much the, the line breaking, I'm talking about water, the pipes are going, that's beating into people's houses.
You're talking about from the meter to their house?
No, that's their responsibility. I'm talking about the, the main lines that are carrying water, so when they tap on underground, we need to, we need to be replacing our water distribution system. Before we jump ahead of that and start talking about a, a meter, a new meter system that's going to be more efficient, you're going to have more efficient pricing, but you're going to have the same stale water. There's people in town that don't even drink the water because of the quality of the water that comes into their house from our rusted pipes. All I'm saying is that we need to be thinking about how we provide a better product to homes before we start talking about how we make more money off of them. And the second thing I want to ask you about is, you said some months we don't get to read the meter. What happens in that, in that case?
I don't say we don't get to read the meter.
Well, you said they.
And we have found, there have been times where meters have not been read.
And what happens in, in those situations? And we notify the, the household?
We, we work with those property owners.
So, you notify them that, hey, we didn't read your meter this month?
Well, a lot of times, they come with us, come to us with a problem.
What's the problem?
And then, we have to evaluate and investigate exactly what's happened, and if we find it, we believe the meter wasn't read, then we will work with them to resolve this issue.
So, okay, so people, if, if your bill, that's why people say their bill fluctuates a little bit, is because some months their bill, their, their meter is not being read.
Well, and there's a, there's a number of reasons why bills can.
Our current system does not kick out that certain meters were not built or input was not put for usage.
Well.
We, I know our system is old.
If I may add to that, I know that our utility billing director, all of the ones that have zero usage, if there is no change in the reading, it, it will be flagged. You know, there are times when a lot of those are yard meters, so if it's winter time yard meters, they may not go out and reread it, but if it's residential, they will send out the crew to, to double-check that number. So, it is flagged in the system.
Okay, so the system, it's not a system, the fact that our system is old, antiquated as far as.
The, the computer system itself.
Yes.
Has that capability, as far as flagging it.
And what is the shrinkage in our system?
When you say shrinkage, you mean loss?
Loss.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, overall, DHA might just stay below ten percent. Our system as a whole, I'm not, I don't have that number off the.
Do we have one for the Summit Gilbert?
System two, system two.
Yeah, system two.
System two?
Yeah.
Do we have a number for that?
System two, I, I don't know that number off the top of my head. Right, so what the percentage was in the last report.
Okay.
So, the automated meter reading comes with full, with new software at Town Hall that includes billing, tracking billing of the usage customers and everything, is that right?
That's correct.
It allows me in my house to monitor every day if I want my usage and cut that back if I so choose, or if on the end of my billing cycle, I, and I've got ten loads of laundry, I can wait two days till the billing cycle starts again.
Yeah.
And do my ten loads of laundry the next month.
And, and the system, the system's built with all these algorithms that, that they've studied and, and put in for years that this has been in place, and it's even now, based on how your water goes up and down, it will even give you ideas as to what may be causing that increase, based on algorithms that they've built into the software. So, if your usage is getting high, it will alert you, and it will say, based on experience, the most likely cause for this is a leaking toilet or a flapper valve in a toilet. It's been built and programmed with all these different scenarios based on how it's reading the additional.
That thing's ticking, and I'm, no water's on at my house, then I've got a leak somewhere, and that helps me, and it indicates a leak somewhere.
It will text or email you, letting you know.
We've got something that's water going through somewhere.
And if you're going on vacation for a week.
Right.
You can actually go into your portal, say, I'm going on vacation, there should be zero use of water at my residence from this date to this day, and if there's any water use that occurs, it will text or email you to let you know.
I don't think anybody down the, the technology, in the benefit of the technology, what I'm saying is, that if you're going to invest one point five million dollars, let's make it, let's improve our product that's going into people's homes and not charge them more money or cause them to pay more money for water before we get the water system correct. Get the infrastructure right first, and then you can meter the water and be justified.
I think it would take us many, many, many years to replace all the lines in the ground.
How many? I didn't say all, but how many years?
Well, how would you identify what to replace?
That's what I'm asking you. How many, how many years would it take, and how much would it take?
You know, I don't think you dig up pipes that aren't breaking.
But they say do that. But they say do that.
Well, you're talking about replacing existing infrastructure, right? I mean, you're digging up pipes that aren't breaking that.
Right. Well, yeah, you got, because like you said, the system is old.
Yeah.
And antiquated, and so we need to replace those things over a period, over a period of years. We need to go ahead and start.
I think we can develop a plan for that, but I think a good first step to.
Is to charge people more water. Now, okay, I would go along with that if you.
I'm not saying that.
If any, hold on, any increase that's, that's created by this new system would be set aside in a lockbox for infrastructure, so for replacing the pipes. So, if you're going to be, if you're going to get ten percent more money from your, from the citizens, basically, because you're more efficient, then let's earmark that money to do infrastructure and only infrastructure.
Only that's something worth talking about. We couldn't, we couldn't make any assumptions about how much.
He just did.
Well, well, you're still going to have a balance of growth and expansion in your water system and, and new buildings being built, new commercials coming on.
I understand.
You're going to have natural growth in the amount of water used, being able to one hundred percent differentiate between what is new revenue for growth versus what is new revenue from.
You mean to tell me that that sophisticated system can tell me when my toilet's hung up, but it can't tell you when, what's new money and old money?
Well, it's not in charge of our rates.
Huh?
It's not in charge of our rates.
Well, I'm saying that, what I'm saying, when you can.
It's just calculating the amount of water.
Well, you can, you can see if you ever have, you know, a new industry come in or new growth come in, you can see where that is. I mean, each, I mean, how many business licenses, new businesses have located this month in Batesburg?
I don't have that on top of my mind.
Doesn't impact fees, isn't impact fee set up to cover that?
It does.
Impact on infrastructure, so.
It, it is.
But I don't, I don't think we have a lot of lockboxes.
Well, I'm just saying, the council can create, if you're going to generate more money from the water, let's put that money into, let's dedicate that money and commit that we're going to dedicate that money to reinvest into putting a good product in people's houses, which means digging up unbroken pipe on a schedule so that we can get that into people's houses.
And the last thing I would end with, and, and I'm not going against what you're saying, what I'm saying is, the quality of water is not because of the condition of the pipe.
I understand.
It's the age of the water that's in that pipe. One thing we've stepped up over the past, I'd say, three to four years, and we're doing a lot more of now, is continuous flushing of our system. We have actually put automatic flushers throughout our system now that one day a week go through and it automatically cuts on, automatically cuts off, but it runs for ten minutes. A quality flushing system is what's going to help you maintain the water quality. The condition of the pipe doesn't determine the quality.
Well, if, if, like you said, if you have old corrosive.
Well, that's what the flushing does. It gets the sediment out of the water, it gets the rust and the other stuff, it flushes it out.
And if, and if you really wanted to have a better quality product, you also would have updated the filtration system, because the more you filter, the better you filter the water that's coming into the pipes. Also, we, defines taste and color and odor. So, I don't think that we're talking about something that's mutually exclusive. All I'm saying is, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to have a windfall. Let's earmark that money into reinvesting it into the people.
Well, and I think that'll be more discussion if council wants to move forward, and if we start to move forward with an automated meter reading system, I think that'd be more discussion among y'all as the, as the, those decision makers for that. You know, we, we'll talk about the automated meter reading as it relates to the refinance and, and maybe even the ARP as we move forward. We'll circle back around to the cost of this. We talked about the wastewater treatment, three projects for that that, that need to be handled and completed. At this point, as we put in the weekly report, we have opened the bids for floating narration project number one and the Headworks project. We opened those bids about two or three weeks ago. For floating narration, CDBG funded from Lexington County, or let me see, we've received a CDBG grant towards this project. The grant amount was three ninety-five, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. At this, the bid amount was four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and nine hundred, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars. At this point right now, we've used a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars of that grant, have about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand left, which means at the town contribution that we're going to have to pay out of pocket towards the floating narration is two hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and eleven cents. Okay? Do we have the cash on hand to be able to pay for that? Yes, we do, without it being a big drain on the bank account balance that we have. Now, we opened the Headworks project bid, and that bid amount was two million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. We have a grant for eight hundred thousand, which we haven't touched at this point for that project, meaning that we have one point four, almost one point five million dollars that we're going to have to come out of pocket to pay for this project. The last one I'm going to show you is basin number two. We've recently applied to CDBG for grant funding, and that's the one that we updated you on, that Lexington County Council should be voting on in their next Lexington County Council meeting, which is.
Which is.
Two weeks, one week, next week, next Tuesday, I believe, is their next county council meeting, and they're expected to pass a grand award of four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars for that project. Now, our projected cost is six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which means we would have a town contribution of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for that project.
So, that's six thirty-five including the engineering?
That, that's, that's a total engineering. That, that's, that's a total, engineering, everything.
What's the bottom line of that slide?
But again, but again, I, I'll get that in a second.
I'm sorry.
Did that include the engineering cost?
It does. Now, oh, I know what I was gonna say. This is projected costs. I mean, now, the fact that we've got contractor working on, the same contractor that's gonna be doing both of these. These funds, it, this is already permitted and engineered at this point. Because it's the same engineering as basin one. So it would be buying the equipment. This cost could actually be lower because this contractor will be on site and if we may be able to negotiate a much more favorable rate because he's already mobilized, he's already there working. It's a matter of installing, removing the existing and installing. So we think we have the ability to bring this number down. So we may not have this much into this project. That's just gonna wait until we get to the, the bidding part and negotiating part with that contractor to see where we're at. The bottom line to, to this is this, assuming we don't touch these, which I would not recommend touching our reserves or taking this away. We get this reimbursement back, this is where we sit in our capital improvement impact fee account. And if I flip back, these three alone are 1.7, could be upwards to 1.9 billion dollars.
But we do have a balanced budget, right?
Okay. So, but these are projects that we need to do and so.
Are they the only ones?
There's more that we need to get to in the future. That, that, that's what I'm transitioning into next. And y'all heard, y'all seen me put in the weekly report and you've heard me say it. What we can look at is refinance of our 2015 revenue bond that we got for the industrial part. To introduce you to the 2015 revenue bond, if you're not familiar. In 2015, we went out and got a 1.8 million dollar revenue bond to install water and sewer infrastructure in the Batesburg Leasal industrial park. It was a 10-year bond, 2.28 interest rate. Our annual payment fluctuates between 200, I think it hasn't been down to 198,000 one or two years, but it can get up to about 209,000 depending on the year. Right now, we have four years remaining to pay on that at 790,000 dollar balance. Yes, man, I was getting to that.
Only what you wanna, you wanna do as a town manager, that's all that we can use that money for. We can't, we can't put our own suggestions in there, what we want done with it. It's all up to you.
Again, right now, I am presenting a staff recommendation, staff thought, a plan. And I said at the end of this, it'll be open for discussion for any other thoughts that y'all have and ideas of recommendations.
Can we put, can we put things that we want done and with that money?
Once I present this, I actually don't have too much more left to go. Once I present this, the floor's gonna be open for discussion on annual action items, the refinance and the ARP. Once I get through this. I just want you guys to understand the recommendation and plan that, that, that we have, that we're setting on the table. Y'all ultimately have to vote on it and decide if that's what we do or if we're adding to it or if we're taking away. I'm just presenting our recommendation and ideas at this point. So here, here's what we're recommending, going back to these things that we've discussed so far. If we were to go out and refinance our revenue bond, whether it's a refinance or do a new bond and pay the old and all, whichever way our re, our bond attorney feels would be the best route to go, which we have had a discussion with him at this point, just to understand where do we go from here if this is what we want to do. We could go get a 3.2 million dollar bond for 20 years. We're assuming at this point right now, a 2.5% interest rate. The last one was 2.28. The annual payment would still remain 205,000 dollars a year or right around that. What would be included in the new bond and what, well, let me say this, what we would recommend be included in the new bond would be taking the 790,000 that we still owe, it would have to roll into it. We take that 1.4 billion or almost 1.5 million dollars that's needed for the wastewater treatment plant Headworks project. We put that into it. We took the basin two projected cost and put that into the new bond and then we paid for half of the automated meter reading system with this revenue bond. If we did all of that, we would not have to come up with any new money in our annual operating budget. We would still be paying what we're paying today.
So you want us to, I'm, I'm confused.
Okay.
Because now we are talking about 2 million dollars that's gonna be given to us, right? And now you're talking about, okay, we're gonna take that 2 million dollars and get 3.2 million dollars in debt.
I haven't gotten to that yet.
Okay, so get to that because I'm not understanding.
I'm, I'm getting there.
Why would how 2 million gets to be turned into a 3 million dollar debt?
When I started this, I, I was trying to find what is the easy way to piece this together? And there's no easy way to flow this. I have to kind of get through it and then I'm gonna circle back with a summary at the end to hopefully paint a picture, um, of, of where we're going. And then we're open for discussion. So now let's move into the ARP, the American Recovery Plan or American Rescue Plan.
Back up real quick and just point out, I don't know if we touched on a couple more where the red line for the, out of the savings. I think they kind of got.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did kind of get past that a few minutes ago. One of the things that, and I mentioned it a while ago when we were on that slide right here. When we talked about the refinance of the revenue bond, these two were rolled into it. Because this bid has already been open and, and the contractor's waiting to be awarded the job and we're ready to move forward. We, these two, we need to try and get moving forward because the bids have been open. We would like to award and get those projects started. We, we've got cash on hand that we could go ahead and pull 231,000, um, for the funding of this. Okay? So that's where that one would be paid for and then other two could be locked into this.
Are you saying that, that, that project is contingent on us borrowing 3.2 million?
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, tell me how that, cause that's something that, that's something that we had already, uh, approved and, and moved forward with, right?
What's that?
The, um, go back to the other slide, the top one, where you said 230, yeah, the 231, um.
This one has not, if the bids have been opened, it has not been awarded.
I'm saying, but the money, the money is there for that.
Well, 395,000 is grant funds, the total bid was 429,977.
With that extra 198, that was the engineering purchase of equipment also.
Right.
The total.
This right here is the installation of.
Wait, how was you planning on paying for it, Ted?
Out of capital improvement impact fee account. This number was much higher than what we expected at the bid.
Okay, but you had.
This, this was much higher than we expected.
Right, but you had money set aside to, to take care of that without going, without borrowing 3.2 million. Okay, thank you. Now my, go ahead, thank you. What, no, that's what he said, Bob, you looking at me, hey, that's what he said.
I'm just, uh, I'm just having difficulty following, but that's.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, again, I'm dealing with an American Rescue Plan.
What's the positive inflow to the capital impact fee on annual basis?
Uh, 620,000.
Okay, so essentially next year, we're gonna have 620,000 in additional. As you say, there are other issues that will have to be addressed down the road.
But Timmy wants to borrow 2 million dollars to do some other.
We have to do, we have to do, needs to be done.
Yes.
Okay? These two have to be done and this needs to be done.
So why, why didn't you prioritize that instead of the top one? And you still can do it.
I have all of three of them as a priority, that's why they're in this.
Okay, when you said one, you said one was, was had to be and the other two was need to be.
DHEC regulated, DHEC regulated needs to be upgraded and done. Because it's antiquated and needs to be.
All right, so which one is your top priority?
They're all three.
No, no, which one, which one have you been out?
One and three are mandated by DHEC.
I understand, but which one?
One and three are mandated by DHEC. The other one's going to be a problem, uh, and DHEC probably will mandate that somewhere down the road.
This is us choosing, are we going to invest in improvements in our wastewater treatment plant or are we going to continue?
First, that's my question. Why didn't I go out to bid first is my question. I'm not, I'm not.
You didn't go out to bid.
It's been bid.
Okay.
We received bids on it.
Okay.
2.2.
And we had the money to cover it, right?
No, not in the account right now.
No, I'm saying we had the money to cover what you sent out to bid, right?
No, we don't have enough cash flow right now to cover what needs to be covered.
Well, why did you send it out to bid?
Because we need to see what the value of it is. You don't know what the va, it came in higher than we anticipated. It could've came in lower. I mean, you don't know what the price of something's gonna be until you go out and bid the project. So, I mean.
And we've got 800,000 in a grant towards it, so we had to go see what it was.
Well, I'm saying that, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to get to a point where now all of a sudden, there's more money on, there's more money on table. So now we trying to.
If I may, if I may get through this, I think, if I could wrap some of this, wrap this around it and we have this discussion, then we can come back and try and piece all this together. Okay? So we, each of you have been provided a summary sheet. Um, it was previously sent out, but just wanted to have a copy in front of you tonight. I also had previously forwarded a, forwarded an email from Todd Glover, Executive Director of the Municipal Association, um, with the MASCE's thoughts on the American Rescue Plan, I put recovery there, American Rescue Plan funds. What I, what I've been told is the 2,200,000, while they're not gonna guarantee the MASCE, they do not see that number changing. Okay, but they're gonna put their disclaimer on subject to change, but they don't see the avenue for that amount to change at this point. With that said, this summary right here gives a early on synopsis of how the funds may be used. Okay? So in looking at that, we know, and I, I put right here a couple of quick highlights from that. It's in the summary that you had previously received and it's in front of you right now. Our early thoughts, I think one thing I did put right here, half the money is gonna be coming in. That's the first allotment we're getting. We're not getting 2,200,000 check. We're gonna get a 1,010,000 check to begin with. And then 12 months from receiving that, we will get another 1,010,000 check. Knowing that, we're trying to look at this based on our needs, our annual action items, um, the things that are in here that need to be covered and what can that money be used for. Now, when you talk about 1,010,000, it can go very fast. One of the things that we're recommending, we were not able to give cost of living pay increases to our employees this year because we had to take a conservative approach to the budget. Not knowing what impact COVID-19 was going to have. Our recommendation is to provide, um, some type of, of bonus type check to the employees since we were unable to do the cost of living. Now, bonus check, that can be in the form of a percentage or it can be across the board. So we ran the numbers and I'm throwing this out there and I'm not saying this is what we have to do. It's open for discussion. If we gave all full-time employees, we just matched what the federal government did and we gave them a 2,000 dollar bonus this year, flat across the board for every full-time employee. Um, and we did 300 for all part-time employees and volunteer firefighters. That would come out to right at 145,000 dollars. Okay? That would be where we would like to see it, but it is open for discussion on what the employees would receive. A while ago, you saw us include in the refinance recommendation, said half the cost of an automated meter reading system. This, these funds do provide for investments into water and sewer infrastructure. So we're requesting the other half of the automated meter reading system come from the initial 1,010,000 dollar allotment. And the final thing, um, I know, and we're gonna, we're, we're kind of watching the guidance on this, but Council McCain, I know as our Comit representative, um, you've been talking about the Comit bus ser, bus service and trying to get it full-time here in Batesburg Leasal. Five days a week, two buses, it's right around 45,000 dollars. My thought process is, we see the avenue to justify this under the American Rescue Plan funds. Our thought process is to fund the first year as a pilot full-time bus service, five days a week. Cause what we don't have and what council doesn't have right now is what I would call quality data on how well the bus service is going to do in Batesburg Leasal. But if these funds qualify, we can get a year's worth of data based on five-day-a-week bus service, two buses, which is going to increase the chances of people utilizing that bus service. After that year of the pilot route, we can look at the data and if the data supports it, then council can move forward with deciding, do we want to use taxpayer dollars that come into our town to continue that service? Or are the statistics just not there? If people just aren't writing it, council can make the decision that the data's not there to support it. So that's where our thought process is, is that if we look at taking 45,000 and funding this first year with that.
Is that the real number? Five days?
Five days, two buses.
Forty-five for a year?
Well, that's our contribution. Lexington County has a contribution and then they have federal funds that flow through their town.
I understand that currently the average rider costs the federal government 4,000 dollars.
Well, and that's a number we would be able to put together at the end of the year to see, to see what those, those.
Comit's proposal, that's what they're paying.
So that's where we're at with regards to that. So to summarize this, if council were to agree tonight that what we recommend, okay, the annual action item, the plan for refinancing revenue bond and at least those initial uses of the American Rescue Plan funds, we would be able to install an automated re, meter reading system. We would have employee bonus pay, engineering and design of both downtown business districts, design and engineering of Flurry Unity Park, completion of the engineering for the town-owned parks, the Pine Street parking and, um, the town entrance signs. And our recommendation, going back to annual action items, is that we go out to bid on the town entrance signs to see how much they cost because we may be able to fund some in this coming year's budget. Build a plan of action for bonding the hospitality techs and what projects we would like to see get done. We will have completed the infiltration and inflow study and we need to start evaluating our course of action with regards to that. Uh, and we will have completed the sewer collection system, GIS, and we're proposing to expand that over to our water system now. The reason we're gonna ask for the water system to be GIS this year is if, if we were to move forward with automated meter reading, when they install the meters, they get a GPS lock on that location and all of that can go into the GIS system as a layer. So if we ever need to say, hey, where's the meter for this or where's the meter for that, all meters are indicated on that. And then we will have done 3.3 million in improvements to the wastewater treatment plant for those three projects.
So if we do, if we do the meters, exactly how much would each person's water bill go with?
I, I can't answer that question.
You said that it was gonna generate.
I cannot answer that question. I don't know.
10%.
You're, you're proposing using one half of the AR.
I'm proposing to use.
What'd he say?
AR, 750,000 of the initial 1,010 to, to get started on this and, and then.
So the other 1,010 will occur in the next, in.
Right.
So, the other one million ten will occur in the next, in twenty-two, twenty-three budget year.
Right, and then I would wait and hold just. Further guidance will have come at that point on the do's and don'ts of these funds, and they'll be more specific. Um, but the things that we've put on there now, we know qualify under the initial guidance that's come out. So, you would have half the cost of AMR and the refinance, half the cost at ARP.
So, what are you planning to do with, with the Isaac, uh, park up there?
So, right now, we've, we're about to close, hopefully be closing soon on the second parcel that council's agreed to buy. That would leave us one more parcel to get.
Has he agreed to sell that to you?
Not at this point.
I didn't think so.
Who?
Worthy.
Worthy?
Property.
And Worthy ain't gonna sell nothing, he's crazy.
So, the next step on that, my recommendation would be to get council to go ahead and approve the engineering and design, considering we can, we can bond beginning January first.
What, what, what design? I mean, what, what do you plan to do with the park?
There, there's a whole concept right there beside you over your shoulder.
Can we not, can we, alright. It, Bob, leave me alone. Yeah, I. But, no, I'm just saying, can we, can we not have, and I have a, a phobia of this, have too many engineering plans, cause in your office or somewhere back over behind us, there's a ass of engineering plans. It's like millions of dollars worth of engineering plans that we can't use. What I like to see, if you're gonna, she, uh, show me what up the unity park, is that we finish that project. Take down the property.
Well, you would have to engineer and design before you can finish.
No, 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 not necessarily, because.
Yes, you would. You would, that's a rec- you can't go out and bid a project that doesn't have plants.
What, what I'm saying is, uh, Ted, and I, I agree, cause you know, Jason's in, in construction.
I'm, I'm not gonna bid a project without plants.
Right, and that's not my, that was not my, my point. My point was, let's not engineer the project and then sit on the project. Let's go ahead and, and knock that project out. That's, that's in, in your.
You have my full agreement in wanting to move forward with that project.
Well, yeah, so, let's go ahead and knock it out, let's not sit on it.
But that's not, we're, we're, at this point right now, we haven't talked about, we talked about engineering. My goal is to acquire the property that we need for projects.
Right.
To have them all engineered and designed, because you can't go out and bid any of the projects until you have that.
But let's have the money before we engineer and design it to, to finish the project, because if you, if you don't, you wind up with having, um, a closet full of engineering drawing, no money, and then it becomes obsolete. The technology and the, and the, that engineering becomes obsolete, and then we have to do it all over again.
I, I thought that the fuzz of these two, you were talking about, is coming out of age tax, and that's available now.
Well, what, what we're talking, you're talking about the potentially bonding at the beginning of next year to pay for these projects.
You're gonna do a ten-year bond, uh, or better.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that.
For ten million bucks?
He's helping us.
Ten million dollars?
I, that's gonna depend.
Ten million dollars?
I don't.
We don't have enough to do all that.
Well, I, I think if we do ten, we, for ten years, we're not gonna be able to afford the debt service. Basically, we bring in annual.
Okay. But we have at least enough money to get at least a lot of them done. The park gonna have to be completely.
I'd like.
But it has to be started.
We're talking ten for that.
Like the Leesville Park.
And we're talking twenty something. So, you're, we're gonna, you charge councils for forty million bucks.
Age tax money to complete the project.
Just look at the whole.
Let's get one of them going.
Please.
Have you ever, have you already spoke with Worthy?
What's the answer?
Have you already talked to Worthy about that plan?
I have had two conversations with him. Um, the first was to tell him our plan, what we would like to do, and that we would like to purchase the property. Um, the second was a follow-up, cause he was gonna talk with members of his family who were a part of the trust. Um, and he said that he was still trying to get to all the, all of them, and that was the last thing.
And ain't the three of them, I know the family. It ain't but three, a sister and two boys, two boys and a girl. So, I mean, how, how long would it take to get in touch with one sister, two, and one brother?
Depends on the relationship.
I mean, I know them. I, I know them.
Well, then, I would encourage you to reach out, see if you could get them to, to, to the property.
Yeah.
I mean, so we've, we've put these things out there. At this point, we're open for discussion, um, for people to share their thoughts. Again, this is our thoughts, recommendations, ideas, um, so.
And, and looking at that one, one of your bond, are there any items inside there that, that would, you know, not, not make it twenty years?
You talking about inside of the, uh, refinance, no, all of those. A meter reading has a twenty-year warranty.
Okay.
So, so it's good for twenty years. Um, the wastewater and sewer infrastructure will certainly be in the, in the ground at the industrial park for many, many more years than that. The wastewater treatment plant improvements are certainly have a twenty-year lifespan on those. Um.
What's the last one there?
No, that was it.
Yeah.
That was it. With regards, um, Mr. Hall, our Councilman Hall and I, a minute ago, we're talking about the, I wanna, I wanna touch on this real quick. Because we are able to go out and pursue a bond on the hospitality tax beginning January first, to ask how much can we do, that's what we're going to have to discuss. Uh, we're certainly gonna have multi-million dollars worth of projects that are engineered and designed. I can tell you now, we're not going to be able to do them all on the first bond. That's a discussion we're gonna have to sit down and talk about. The other thing is, if we're bringing in five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in hospitality tax in a year, we're not gonna wanna have a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar bond payment, because then we have zero dollars for things that may come up that we wanna do. The discussion that we're gonna have to have later as we go through that process is, how much of that five hundred and seventy thousand do we want to use towards the bond payment? So, we may be able to do four or five million. We're, what, what I've put here as an annual action item is for us to start that process, um, around January, and reach out to our bond attorney and, and discussions with council on that. Does somebody have a question?
No, I was just gonna ask you, if the automated, uh, meter reading, how long would it take to complete it?
It's about a six-month install time.
Okay, so.
They will, they will do a batch of maybe like a hundred or a hundred and fifty a week, something like that. Um, they'll GPS and then at the end of the week, those meters will come online. As they install, those meters will come online, and it will just be pieced together.
So, once you get the automated meter reading system, then you won't need meter readers?
You will need a meter, probably one meter technician. And, cause sometimes a meter reading just may not come in, and you need to send them out there to make sure, uh, the battery's not going dead, or somebody's run over the antenna that's, that's on top of the meter box, which is supposed to withstand heavy, heavy, heavy damage, but sometimes they can't.
Well, there's two meter readings now, right?
There's two now, funded for two.
I mean, two people that go out.
Of course.
So, you, you're not gonna, you're not, you're not.
Again, again, that's not, I, what I would like to know tonight is, is on, with regards to automated meter reading, since that's what we're talking about, the discussion needs to be, is that something we want to look at moving forward with? And if so, do we want to have half of that come from the American Rescue Plan dollars, and the other half get fighting stand to the revenue bond? Um, at this point, I've laid everything out from our perspective, thoughts, recommendations. The floor is open at this point to new ideas or, or changes.
Um, Ted, with the employee bonus pay, does that includes the police department and all?
That's, that's across the board. And we even, because of COVID nineteen, our volunteer firefighters have been going out there.
Right.
Into these homes with people with COVID, our part-time employees.
They ain't doing them, they let their house completely burn down. They didn't even put water on their house. I got it recorded. They didn't even put water on their house. One person went up to the house with the hose. When they tricked the hose on, it slugged his little ass out. Nobody put water on their house. So, what they need money for?
We have thirty-two volunteers.
It was about eight hours.
All of them have responded to one or more.
I'm not ever looking.
Have responded to one or more calls during the.
So, with the.
Yes, I'm certainly have.
I mean, I'm just saying.
The data.
You know, will they get it this year or the next year or?
I would say, if some of the money comes in, and it's in the account, we would, we would, we would do that. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I, everybody needed, I mean, it's hard times.
Your bank number, trunk is our, I like it too. The ones we talked about last meeting.
What? What'd you say?
I'm sorry.
What did you?
I'm sorry, it was improper for me to.
Yeah, it was. So, what did you say?
There were comments made about the dramatic improvement of the economic improvement of the town's finances. And it was based on raw numbers that, uh, did not show encumbered balances, but showed raw balances.
Ted, do you have what you need yet? I mean, as far as discussion and, and intent?
I would like to know.
So, what you wanna know is, does anybody have something to recommend or want to do differently than what you recommend?
Or you want to board with, with this plan?
Right.
I mean, I'm looking at, I, I like all these ideas, I like all these options. There, there may be other stuff to discuss. Um, I think all of these things are positive things, some are absolutely necessary, um, especially relative to the wastewater plant, things like that.
You apparently have been politicking.
But, but here's the, but, but here's the thing, here, here's the thing. So, we, we have things that, that we needed to do, whether we got the two million dollars or not. Right? And those are things that are normal things that we, that we plan, that we have planned on doing. So, my thing is, let's, this is money coming from the government for the citizens. So, let's give them at least half a bang for their buck. You understand what I'm saying, so that, you know.
Can I clarify, this is money coming from the government to support municipalities and counties.
Right, but it's, it's, the reason why it was there is because of COVID. And, you know, it's, it's good, and I don't have a problem with giving our people, uh, bonus or whatnot either, but you know, we have a lot of businesses who weren't, weren't open, and weren't able to open. And so, you know, maybe we look at, you know, refunding as part of their, uh, business licenses. But that's the, that's the thing to hand on there. But, I don't.
I guess they'll come in when they didn't have to pay the hospitality tax.
Well, how, everybody, yeah, but everybody don't have a restaurant as a business. But, the automatic meter reader thing, is something that we should take responsibility for and fund outside of, uh, uh, this, uh, COVID money. Because we were gonna do that anyway. We were gonna, we were gonna have to come up with that money anyway if that's what we want.
Can, can I make a recommendation?
Senator, may I address, excuse me, may I address your comment on the deferred or unpaid hospitality taxes? My understanding that it is unlawful for a restaurant or a business to collect taxes and not give them. So, therefore, those vis- hospitality tax payments had no influence on whether or not are the cost to that business to operate during that period, uh, per se. Also, those businesses that were impacted or may have even gone out of business to some extent may or may not have been subject to the hospitality tax, so forth. So, the hospitality tax situation does not play into whether or not a business was adversely affected by COVID nineteen, in my mind, in my opinion, but that's my opinion.
Well, and I, if I could address something, Council Kane, for the sake of discussion, if you, if, even if you didn't like the wording, or, or, or to be able to say that the use of, of the American Rescue Plan dollars of seven hundred fifty thousand towards automated meter reading, okay, well, then we'll pay half of the wastewater treatment plant, one point four million that we owe, or almost one point five, we'll let that be from that, and we'll roll the full automated meter reading system price into the refi.
But, the thing is, that should not even be a discussion as far as this money is concerned, because this was something on our plate that we want to do, and that we were gonna have to do outside of that pot of money, but for that money being here, you know what I'm saying? So, you were gonna find a way to get that in the budget, one way or another, whether we got this money or not.
The way I was gonna do it was through a refinance of the revenue.
Well, then, then I saw you should do it, and then, that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars needs to go, in my opinion, directly to, um, a project for the community and.
Yeah, but you, I need sidewalks. You, y'all ain't gonna do it because I'm asking for them, because it's me asking for them, so I know I'll never get them. But, they need sidewalks down there. They need other stuff, they need other stuff in this town that we need done. So, why can't you use that money to do things that need to be done in this town?
I will tell you, the ones that we put up there, we know can qualify.
Well, Ted.
That's what I'm trying to qualify to, cause I already asked. I'm gonna be bullshitting.
But now, Ted, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that I did, I did go, when I was in DC, uh, over the weekend, uh, we happened to play golf with a, with a kid that was on the, um, uh, appropriation. He was staffer for the appropriations, uh, committee. And these projects, the, the wooden project, if the sidewalks of council, being sidewalks would be, uh, qualifying. And what he told me was, Councilman, the Biden mentioned, we not coming after Batesburg-Leesville for two million dollars. We're not gonna, unless you do something really corrupt with that money, they not coming after you for, for that money. And they made the regs, uh, purposely vague so that you can do, uh, projects like that. All I'm saying is, the seven hundred fifty thou- everything, you know, is cool, but the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for those automatic, uh, meters should be something that we do as a council outside of this, uh, grant money, and that this grant money should be used for, um, uh, public purpose, such as sidewalks. The, the, the part is. Uh, at least that part of it should be used for that. And, um, and we could talk about how we fund, you know, something like a meter thing later. That's just my, that's my opinion, that's all.
And again, that'd be great. Yep.
Anybody outside of any other projects that they, that they might want, besides that?
Sidewalks are part of my house, too.
Well, I mean, that's, that's possible, I mean. You, you saying that sarcastically? You trying to make fun of it? But, but there are people.
There's a motel that was out of my house, people walk constantly. It's, it's right on Highway one.
Right, you, you're the commercial district, she's in the residential.
I think it's a great idea, I don't know that we can do it.
People are walking in the damn ditch.
Same, same.
Wait, so.
Because fucker coming so bad down the street.
Wait, so you can say that, uh, infrastructure, you said that, you said, you said that infrastructure, the reason why it's not in there is because he didn't ask, uh, Jeff Shackett about that. I did ask specifically about sidewalks. And he trying to say that one set of infrastructure projects are okay, but then the other, it's not in there? So, they separated out, you can do all types of infrastructure except for sidewalks, that's what you're saying, man?
No, that's not what I said. I said, let's put in sidewalks.
You know, the danger is safe, the same bullshit.
I'd love to see some sidewalks.
The same bullshit is happening in Batesburg that happened in Woodville. But Isaac, Isaac got it.
Can I say something?
Okay, so.
That's a lie, you're a liar.
Ted, did you say, did you say, did I say to you on this break, yeah, it'd be great to have sidewalks, didn't I? On the telephone, with this stuff coming out?
You talking about numerous times over.
So, you, what you, wait, you, you saying that, you saying that.
Y'all are attacking me.
You saying that sidewalks cannot, this money cannot be used in sidewalks?
What I am saying at this point is what I've said in the beginning. Right now, on page two.
Who, who?
It has.
Where did this come from?
It has, this came from.
Where did this come from?
The Municipal Association.
Because that's the question that you asked.
Can I please finish?
But that's the question you asked, alright?
I called her.
Can I please finish my statement?
Go ahead.
I got her number, I called her. We talked for three hours the other day.
I talked to Jeff.
She told me that sidewalks would be done.
The fourth bullet.
She told me.
The fourth bullet point spells it out plainly, make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Now. Now, the M A S E has said right now, that what they're saying is, we know this based on the bill that they've read. Now, they are reaching out to the Treasury Department, they are getting further clarification on, on all the details of exactly what this money can be used for, but what they're saying now is, this is clearly stated in.
Okay.
In, in what, in the bill that's been written, they're getting further clarification. Sidewalks may qualify.
It ain't no way, she told me they did. I already talked to her.
I've not seen her, and until I see it, I don't know.
Okay, so if we, if, let me ask you all something, if, if sidewalks in the park can, can be used, uh, that money can be used for it, do we have a problem with that? That's, that's the question, if it, if it can be used for that. And that's the question I think I would like to know before we, before we leave, so that we don't have these little meetings with, where some council people are available.
Some people get phone calls and some people don't.
And then you come into a meeting on, on Monday.
Like January eight, and everybody get phone calls, but I don't never get phone calls.
What I'm saying is that, we come in on Monday and people have already discussed further what we discussed here. And then, and part of council feel like that they blindside it. And then people want to know, well, y'all act like y'all had each other's throats. Well, some of it is in the dark and some people are not, that's all. So, the question is.
We have councils, then we have full council.
Exactly.
Okay, but my question to the councils, we all sitting here, and I ain't talking behind nobody's back about what I, what I, what I feel or, you know, the situation is, where do people feel about the automated meter and that seven hundred fifty thousand, which we were gonna pay anyway, coming out of this new money? That's all, that's what I want to know, because then I, I got a good idea where, where, where we are as.
If you wouldn't have got the money, you're gonna still do it? You had the money, you had already made plans for how you were gonna do it?
And that's illegitimate, that's illegitimate.
If I, I, I would address that. Refinancing this revenue bond is something that I've had a sight on, an option, an, an option I've seen available moving forward. It was what I was considering using for an automated meter reading system. We can put the whole cost of the automated meter reading system into this refinance. The wild card that came up, now, the question is, do we want to have to come up with new money in our annual? Do we want to have to come up with new money in our annual operating budget? Or do we not want to have to? What I'm proposing is, fine, if we want to put the whole, the whole thing into um whole automated meter reading system into the revenue bond, so we can say it didn't come from the American Rescue Plan, that's fine. But half of this money needs to come from the A R P money to pay for that.
Well, Ted, you.
It's one, not unless, not unless we want to add.
Ted, we were gonna do that, we gonna do that anyway.
Mr. Kane, please.
Yes, I'm sorry.
This right here is three point two million dollars. If we were to take the automated meter reading system, plug it in to this, M four, and we do the full one point four million dollars, this is gonna go up almost to four million dollars. Then, this number right here is gonna probably go up to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And when that happens, that means we're gonna have to come up with about forty five thousand dollars in reoccurring money in our annual.
Right, but the, the way you do that, if I'm understanding you correctly, is that this thing is gonna generate between three and, and ten uh percentage uh uh increase in the water revenue. It could, right, so then, that's about three percent.
But it could.
Right, but three percent, you wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't gonna raise money. If it was gonna lose, if it was gonna lose that money.
This ain't just about the money, Mr. Kane, this is about efficiency.
You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be doing that.
This is about efficiency, too.
So, right, which, which increases our, our, our revenue.
No, I'm talking about internal operational efficiency.
Okay, well, I mean, it still increases our bottom line, three to ten, three to ten percent. So, you take that money, that, that money, and I keep talking about lock, lock and earmark, so that you take that revenue money and you can uh put that towards that two, two hundred and five thousand dollars, so that it does not go up. You can put that towards paying off the bond and reinvesting in, in the infrastructure. So it's a way to take that seven hundred fifty thousand out of this COVID money.
A while ago, you were talking about earmarking that towards fixed lines in the ground. Now you want to use it towards increased investment, which one?
I'm flexible, and I'm able to say when I'm wrong and when, when a new idea comes on.
Okay.
You know, and if Tom Brady wins another championship, I'll be a Buck fan again.
Well, and, and, and that, that option's there, but then, what I'm saying is, on average, three, five, some cities that had out stringly old meters, have seen upwards to ten percent.
Right, which we have.
But there is no guarantee, and I can't sit here and guarantee, and there's not a, a, a system that's.
So why, why are you doing it?
I just told you I was doing it.
Is it gonna, is it gonna cost?
It will speed up, it will speed up meter reading from sixteen days, two people, eight hours a day.
Is it gonna cost?
To, to one minute.
Is it possible that we can lose money on it?
I don't see how we could lose.
Okay, there you go, so we not lose no money?
I don't see how we lose.
Take that, take that.
I don't think we have meters out there over reading, well.
Right.
We definitely don't wanna do it if we gonna lose money.
Right, so we not.
Only way that would happen is if.
And every time I, every time I.
Where is the cost benefit analysis? Where is the payoff? We're gonna, we're gonna have one less meter reader. Now we're gonna have a technician. Is that technician gonna be the equivalent of a meter reader, or is it going to be a pay grade increase? Because tech, meter readers don't need to re, don't need to know how to repair meters and they don't need to know.
It would probably remain at the same level.
I just think we need to get paid for the water that we're distributing it out.
Oh, I, I understand that.
We agree, everybody.
Do you know that you're not being paid for it now? Do you know that you're not being paid for it now?
No.
Okay, I'm just saying that this needs some thought.
But, but, but the way they talk.
This needs more than a, a one hour uh discussion with.
Yeah.
A this instead of.
Three things on the topic here was a, a good question for one work session, I agree.
So, but, uh, Paul, let me ask you.
All y'all know so much about what's, what's being done, Jason.
I'm making a trip to Columbia, he just gave me a real.
But Shirley, if you're inclined, if you're inclined, I don't tell you, anybody proud of you. I'm not, I'm not dealing with it anymore, sir.
Except me, everybody know what's going on except me, everybody's gonna put their ten cent in to go along with this deal because all y'all been talked to.
That's, that's wrong, Miss Shirley, I had to tell you.
I know, I know.
You're a liar.
You lying, if you gonna go be a liar, you were lying.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can we take a recess?
I'm not gonna be sitting here being sold it, Cal, you're the board member.
Can we take a recess, please? Five, five ten minutes, take a, take a break, alright, take a break, thank you.
I don't wanna hear it. I'm tired of your glory, I don't want nothing from you.
Every meeting we have. You ain't gonna holler at me, mister. I will fight your ass.
Don't talk to me, you're out of way.
Fight your ass, tell him. You think you gonna holler at me? I'll slap your ass, serious.
You will, you will go to jail.
I don't give a damn about that. How do y'all put a damn shit like this, you call everybody, I know you call.
Alright, let's get back into, let's get back to work for the work session. Mr. Lockeney.
Wait, Ted, can I get a, answer my question answered?
What was that?
Well, Paul, I think we were talking to Paul about um can we get some type of understanding about the seven hundred fifty thousand for the automatic meter, meter? Whether they uh belong in our normal budgetary responsibility, or can we take that amount of money out, the seven hundred fifty thousand, and do something in the community that, you know, because everybody went through a lot in uh over the last year or so. And I personally think if we get one of those parks up and running, that um, you know, we at least do a groundbreaking, clear, get it going, that's something that the community can see, touch and use. Um, and this is something that we're gonna be doing anyway. And it's gonna generate some, some revenue to pay for itself if it increases that bond, if folks show desire to open a bond. But I want to see some of that COVID money go to the community, to, to uh the people, not, you know, just in, in, in one community, but something that we all can rally around. But that's my thought. And I'm not getting the feedback, and I think that's what kind of set Shirley off, because we know that um uh at some point, people have opinions, they don't want to say them in this open forum, but they have opinions about it and it's gonna be discussed. But it's not gonna be discussed in a forum here where it probably should be discussed.
I agree, people are having opinions about everything that's been said in here, but they don't give any alternative of what they, it can be done differently. Now, yeah, I'm all for the meter reading thing, how we gonna pay for it? That's up for us to decide, okay? All these here are amazing suggestions and recommendations, but it is to us decide on how we wanna do it. So, you know, that's.
Do you have enough, do you have enough information to make that decision?
I do not right now.
Okay, alright.
Well, what information do we need to know, because that's what I like to have the work sessions for, so that we don't um, I mean, why don't we have that enough information? So that we, we knew this is what we were gonna discuss, and now we're gonna wind up having little pockets of, of uh of chatter among council, and then one day, it's gonna be on the agenda and everybody's gonna be all for it. And I guarantee you, it's gonna be at least three, three people that had no idea that this was coming, and then what's gonna be said is, well, hell, we had a work session about it. We did.
So what I've heard so far is alternate ways to do this is only with some of the top of infrastructure, including sidewalks. Is there anything else was, I can't remember what anything else I might have heard that came out of this so far, after we've been here?
Well, it's, I think that what Ted said was the, the, the meter, the comment. And the bonuses, those are, were those the three things of the?
And the initial first million, there would still be a little bit of the initial.
And then first uh.
There would still be another million coming.
Right, and so, maybe we split the difference. Maybe we take um three hundred, three hundred thousand, two hundred, some odd thousand towards the meter and then maybe take three hundred thousand towards one of the parks. That's a compromise, I'm not happy with it, and I don't think that we have.
Councilman Kane, my only concern at this point right now, when you say take three hundred thousand toward a park, there is nothing right now.
Correct.
There's nothing in this that says that money can be used towards community facilities and, and parks.
I will, I promise you this, at, by the end of the week, I'll get a answer from uh somebody in the federal government, whether it be uh Cliver's office, Graham's office, or somebody in the administration, I'll get us an answer on it. But the, the question, the, the, assuming that we can do it, because there's nothing in there that says you can use that money for the comment either. You'd have to stretch a little bit to, to, to make those things uh fit. So all I'm saying is, a compromise, like most people say, is when, when, you know, everybody's not happy, so to speak. If we split the difference on that seven fifty and we earmark it for something that's for the public, like the park, if it's, if it's um um, if it's permissible. But at, at some, at some point, you know, we've been talking about sidewalks on Line Street for at least four years, and it's a residential.
Now, since I got hit by a car when I was seven years old, right in front of my house by two white guys, drag racing. And then, my mom done found, filed a petition and brought it up here, nothing was ever done, and this is seventy, sixty years later. Seventy, sixty-five years later.
So, you know, and at some point, we should at least know what it would cost to, uh, when we engineer anything else, what it would cost to put sidewalks along Line Street. Um, and Bob, that's part of your district too, it's not just Shirley's district, one side of that street is eight and one side of it is.
Your kid, man.
It's five.
You're a kid, man.
Trust me, I'll walk with the woke of y'all.
I can tell you what it's cost us to um do that short section on how we wanted them to come from North Lee Street to the Walmart, and that's almost a million dollars.
Okay.
And it's not quite a mile. So, it just, if that's any perspective. Now, now, a couple of things, um there was some, and, and, Owen, I can't remember if you were town manager at the town, one of my understandings about the challenges that were faced years ago when that was being discussed, and you may be able to lay it out, one of the issues that they ran into, and I'm not saying it's a issue today, is that people did not want to give up right away in their front yards.
That's a lie, because ever since I got, ever since I got hit, they have all agreed to have sidewalks, Owen lying.
Man.
Owen did not go down there and talk to everybody on Line Street. He did not go down there and talk to everybody on Line Street, he did not.
Man.
And when they signed their petition, everybody down there signed their petition for sidewalks.
Okay.
Everybody, I know, because my mother brought it up here.
Okay, I, I, I was.
Alright, does anybody oppose sidewalks on, for Line Street?
No.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Okay.
No. Nobody opposed it.
What I'm saying, here now.
One, one, one other point that, that I.
Wait, hold on, let's give me that, Owen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Owen.
Please, please, sir. When I first came here, a lady lives on that street. Came listening. Came and asked me to put sidewalks on that road. At that point in time, I talked to the mayor about it, and he said, yeah, well, let's see if we can do it. I went down there and talked to eighty percent of landowners.
That's not true.
Blimey.
That's not true.
Oh, everybody down there on that street wants a. People, I'm interrupt you.
Everybody wants sidewalks down their street.
Do I interrupt you when you're talking?
Sometimes, yeah.
Owen, go ahead.
Eighty percent of the landowners down there said, well, I have to lose some land. I said, yes, sir, we will do it, and we will get the engineers to come out here and mark the street to where the sidewalks will go. That killed it right there. Okay, fine.
That's not true.
Your memory's better than mine, then.
What's the width of the right of way?
That wouldn't give the right one.
Mr. Owen, what's the width of the right of way? What is the width of the right of way on, on that uh?
I, I can't remember, but.
Would you like to see the map?
I, I, I.
I'll drop the map.
Whatever.
That's not true, because everybody down there want sidewalks, everybody.
A little more than that.
On that street want sidewalks.
The problem, the problem is that the roads are not committed to a right of way.
Now I'm saying, if you, if you put sidewalks down there, a road, DOT right of way,
you would have to put sidewalks here and they would have to cross the roads to here, because the road is not in the middle of the sidewalks. So, there probably is some areas where you would have to have people give up their property. In some areas, there appears to be, and I'm trying to meet with S C D O T, Engineering License, there appears to be room there to uh put sidewalks in certain sections, but there will be an effort to maybe get people to sign over the sidewalk.
And, and again, that's gonna be a project that's done in, in more than one, you don't have to do it all in, in one, at one time, right?
Well, you will definitely, one of, one of DOT's policies is it has to be intersection to intersection, you cannot stop a sidewalk anywhere less than intersection to intersection.
That, that's possible. You can go from, uh, pipe from the intersection at Summerlin or Line uh to Ruby Street and from Ruby down to Solomon and then Lawrence, and those are intersections, uh, on the opposing side, there are.
You couldn't do it and then stop right in front of Ms. Mitchell's house and, and not continue up to the intersection.
But there are, it could be sectioned in about six sections.
Right, so.
Alright, one, one thing that I, I just want to make a point of, alright, let me ask this question. How do people feel about refinancing the revenue bond?
With that, with that uh, with that meter thing in it or out?
Let me, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step through this. First off, how do y'all feel about refinancing a revenue bond to get some things done from the utility side?
I'm okay with it, I mean, as long as it doesn't affect what we're paying now, because if it, if we have that impact to the.
Okay.
But no, it's, it's gotta be effective, because even though the payment's not gonna go up, the interest has gotta be going up, so we going to for twenty years, right?
Right now, I, right now, I, no.
Rate increase.
It should be close to what it is now, but it may be a.
I mean, because you gotta be paid, okay, alright.
We, we don't have a look at all.
We get a little bit, okay.
Right now, we did two point five in the sum with the last one at two point two eight, so we did. eight, so we did for assumption, the calculating purposes for that, moved it up some points. Um, if, alright, so wastewater treatment plant projects that that we've talked about refinancing in, i- if people are on board with refinancing, we need to get, our, our bids are good, I think, for ninety days. And what I need to know is, if we're gonna be good with rolling wastewater treatment improvement projects into a refinance, I would like to get that ball rolling, because we, we have a ninety day window with our contractors to note, let them know about awarding the project. And and so, now, that brings in the, the, I'm not saying we can't have a work session solely on automated meter reading, I can bring somebody in who, who does this for a living, that's full of knowledge and all this other stuff, but what.
It's more, it's more than that from my standpoint, if I'm the interruption. You know, we need a long range look at what our total financial situation's gonna be. You just said, this equipment is going to outlast the bond, the twenty year bond. But the equipment's gonna be sitting there, what else is gonna fall apart around it that we're gonna be coming back, future council's gonna be coming back for five million dollars here or six million dollars there? What is the condition of the sewer plant? And if you've got twenty year equipment and it's got fifteen years on it, then you know you're looking five years from now to add to that cost. I'm not prepared to go to my constituents and say, I just voted to go ten million dollars in debt, go do another ten million dollars in debt, another twenty million dollars in debt, uh on that basis, without looking at the longer term situation. Just tell us what, if some of us get reelected, what are we looking at in the next council? So that's, that's, you know, we need to take a long look, we need a fiscal responsibility ordinance, folks. We need some reserves, and it may mean that you gotta tap taxes, and it may mean that we tighten our belts. Alright, a lot of communities have. That's my speech of the day.
Ted.
Yes, sir.
Teddy, what you looking for is direction?
Well, there was a final point I was gonna try to.
Nothing is binding in a process.
Making your point, that's what I do.
I'm losing it now, hold on.
Sorry. Well, wait, wait, the mayor could probably finish your point, go ahead. What was his point?
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm, 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 I'm.
You were talking about, you wanted some assurance that we're gonna do a bond.
England knows and jabs and all that, I'm, I'm, our risk is up for y'all's special. I'm standing up there just being jabbed at, so I, I have nothing.
I'm sorry, I apologize if I jabbed.
I wasn't thinking.
No, he's talking about me.
General, okay.
He's talking about me.
Alright, so the, the question was, do we wanna do a bond, basically? And then the other question is, well, how big of a bond do we wanna do if we wanna do a bond? Is that what you're saying, Ted?
Where, where, where I was going with this.
Yeah.
Was, okay, if we know we wanna refinance a bond, we wanna roll wastewater treatment improvement projects into, to get these done. While we're refinancing, what I was trying to get to was, if the interest is there among council members, I understand there's more things that need to be discussed about it. But if council members feel like they, in sorts, want to do an automated meter reading system, while we're refinancing this, would be the time to refinance it with enough money to have, do we have to spend that money? Does that mean we have to go get the automated meter reading system tomorrow? No, it does not, but we can borrow the amount that would be needed. And do we wanna do that if people feel like they're going to be supportive of it? I think there's some people that may be wavering on the fence, I think there may be.
Is exactly what is the end cost going to be? And I know you have an estimate, but you're gonna save what, thirty-five thousand dollars a year by getting rid of, by removing a meter reader slot? Alright, over, over ten years, that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars against the borrowed money toward the project, one and a half million dollars. So, you know, do you have to go borrow the one and a half million dollars, or do you, or whatever the number is? Or do we borrow less and assume that the savings from the meter reader is going to pay a part of that? Alright, you're talking about two hundred and five thousand dollars a year annual payment? If you, if you dismiss a meter reader, uh forty thousand of that two hundred and five thousand is gonna come out of that salary. So where, where is the chart that says, here's what's gonna happen? Alright, I mean, I don't go to the bank and borrow four hundred thousand dollars for a house if I know that I'm gonna sell my house and apply it to the four hundred thousand dollar cost. I just, I'd like to see the numbers. And I think it would be irresponsible on my part to, to say, let's go borrow three point two or four point five without seeing those numbers. That's just my opinion, as Mr. White says, we all have one.
How much time do you need in order to refinance the bond? Is that something that needs to be done now?
The, the bond attorney said, I, I, Jay, help me remember, was it about sixty days that a, a, a bond can be turned over uh from point of beginning to a vote by council uh to closing documents being signed, about sixty days on that? Um, we do believe, I, I don't, ninety days is what the bids are good for, but if we're in the process of securing the money, we do believe we can go to contractors and have extend that, you know, two or three weeks, should we need them to do that, we are confident in that, but certainly would like, if the refinance is there, to get that process started so we can.
The, the question we had settled is, are we gonna put that seven point five million, a five point, seven point five?
Seven hundred fifty.
Seven hundred fifty thousand out of this total money, or we gonna do it the way that we had originally planned to do it? Um, or we gonna roll it into the bond? And what, what I was saying is that if we, you know, I, I don't like the idea, but I would support the idea for three uh, for three hundred seventy-five thousand, and three hundred seventy-five thousand go to the park if it's, if it's permissible. Or we can roll that whole uh cost into the bond, which we were going, which we were gonna do in the first place. And take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and do something else with it, do, take the whole seven hundred fifty thousand and do something for the community with it. So that's the question, I guess, is the, that I have for council, is do you wanna roll it into the uh, into the bond, or you wanna use the, the grant money for it? That's the question, that's the only question in my head right now.
The grant plan.
The COVID money.
The COVID, the COVID dispersment, yes, sir.
Right. And hell, if you're gonna, if you're gonna roll that in there, hell, roll Shirley sidewalks in there, half a million dollars. You gonna borrow money for infrastructure?
Well, but the bond issue is gonna be against the enterprise fund and it's gonna be revenue secured, so therefore, you can't mix general funds, which is sidewalk and infrastructure, with enterprise fund.
Well, it's fine, but let's, let's just do it the way that we were going to do it and use that seven hundred fifty thousand for what it really is intended for, which is the community, um, to do uh, to do something else with. Or we split the baby.
Well, it's already split, he's got it cut in half, half a, half a.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
I thought, yeah, I mean, uh, yeah.
Because, because we, it wasn't, it wasn't being in the first place.
Mr. King, I, I, I share your sentiments, but I'm just not confident that we actually are in a financial situation to really do it.
To do what?
And still maintain the basic services that.
To do what?
To the community.
To do what?
To, to, to do something other than address our infrastructure issues at the moment.
Well, we're gonna address them, we're gonna address them one way or another. So you, you saying that you wanna use.
That's not necessarily a given, I mean, I, I'm not going, I'm not in a position to, to count on uh eggs uh tomorrow morning just because I have chickens.
What are you talking about? He, he was gonna put that money.
Where's the money gonna come from for your?
Where was it, where was it gonna come from in the beginning, Bob? We didn't have this money uh, uh, three months ago.
The, the, Councilman King.
And three months ago, we didn't know that we were gonna have a seven million dollar bid instead of a one million dollar bid.
Okay, but that's not what we're using that seven hundred fifty thousand for.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not, we're using seven hundred fifty thousand for the meter.
This was what we didn't know.
Okay, so put the seven hundred fifty thousand towards this, and we don't do the uh, the meter.
Well, it's a matter of which pocket you take the money out of.
Exactly, so, so all I'm saying is, you gotta use some of that money for the community then.
And there'll be another one million, ten thousand dollars coming.
Right, so then use, use that on the back end then, use, use the money that you wanna use on the back end.
We will have further clarification on, on, on more specific uses by that time. These, the uses that we're, we're putting right here, we know, for a fact, right now, can be used.
Because that's the question that you asked Jeff.
I know, I.
You asked Jeff specifically that question. Did you ask Jeff, could you use it for a park?
And he said, we don't know yet.
You asked, you asked Jeff that question?
Yes, I did.
Okay, alright, this is difficult.
I asked him about a fire truck, I asked him about police cars, I asked him about a bunch of different things.
Okay.
And he said, right now, you're safe as bed as water and sewer infrastructure. And, and, and employee pay, and we, we talked, that's, that's where my recommendations came from, is, is those were things that.
But your, your real recommendation coming out of, coming out of the, coming out of that grant.
I can't speak to Mr. Shirley's conversation with somebody from the municipal association or you, with somebody from Washington.
You kinda, you kinda, you kinda do that three car Molly thing, Molly thing, because really, the three things that you proposed to come out of the grant money was the comment, uh salaries, uh bonuses, and the meter, the meter reading thing, right? And all I'm saying is, let's take the meter reading thing out, keep the other two, and see if we can use that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the park or some other uh project. And basically, and the only reason why I wanna take it out of there is because we were gonna spend that money in the budget or in that bond anyway.
Then fair enough, we'll put the full automated meter reading system into the revenue bond, but I'm gonna need half of the wastewater treatment plant, one point four million, covered with the American Rescue Plan dollars, without us going up and reoccurring dollars in our annual operating budget.
If you didn't have that money, you wouldn't have that, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be saying that.
Well, I know it can be used for that.
Well, I know, but you know it can be used for that, but if we didn't have that money, you would be using some other money, right?
But we do have the money.
No, no, but you would, if we didn't have the money, you would be using that money for the, the other money for that and not this money, right?
Our annual operating budget probably would have to go up in some reoccurring dollars to get off.
Yeah, but you had, you had a plan for that money, because we didn't know we weren't even getting this money, so, what?
But the option's been put out there for our annual operating budget to not have to increase.
Yeah, but you also are, are putting in something that you want and not something that we need.
Again, you would not consent to make this, it's.
No, 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 but that's, that's, that's a fact. The fact is, we do need the, the uh, the um, the sewer project. We don't need is that one point five million dollars for that meter reading uh device system. You want that, but that's not, we don't need that.
From a staff standpoint, you're absolutely correct, we recommend and would love to have that.
Exactly, so, you know, don't, don't, right, so don't, don't pretend like that's a necessity to come out of that grant money.
And it's a recommendation I made to this body, it's for this body to decide, and I would love to hear the thoughts of other people.
I would too.
Would they like to move forward with the consideration of automated meter readings?
Right. Because at, in the day, that, that uh, that meter reading system, like I said, I would swallow some of it, but, you know, uh, that money would definitely have to be used to be earmarked, the, the revenue from it, because other than that, it's gonna get absorbed into the fund and you're not even gonna, you know, we, it's just gonna be money that we normally have to spend. We need to make sure that money goes earmarked for uh infrastructure, reinvesting infrastructure in the, in the town, that's the only way I would have to even vote for a, a bond like that, if that, or a device like that. Whatever money is generated needs to go, be reinvested. But that part, that, that should not be one of the three things that we use the um, the grant money for.
So that, that one item that actually fits within the three items there, you pull it out, the other two items.
No, I'm saying, based on the guidance that we have. Well, no, based on part of the guys that Teddy got from, from this.
What the minute, well, I don't know.
That everybody got from.
Well, I'm saying, but so hypothetically, if, 'cause I, nobody had said that, that um, that you cannot use that money for.
No, no, I, I, I.
Right, so until we, until we find out.
I'm just saying, this is what we have tonight.
Right.
And we're looking at what we have tonight.
This is what we have at night, because that's what we were supposed to have at night. It was the question I was asked.
We all got this.
Okay.
Email to us, I mean, I.
We'll get it to you, we'll get it to you by appointment, okay?
Can we pay, can we pay for our name meter reading out of hospitality tax? But we can't pay the parks, yes?
Yes.
When you can have an answer as to find out exactly what this money can be used for?
Um, and like, like Mr. Glover said in his email, they're waiting, and they've not given a timeline on when they, they.
I, I promise you that I will get you an answer before, before, before close the business Friday, from any administrative source or a congressional source.
Friday's still Friday, okay?
I would, I would really like to see the guidance from Treasury.
By Holy Tuesday, I'll let y'all know.
Ted, if you would be.
I, I mean, while I, 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 I can respect, this is my opinion, while I can respect a, a, an elected official's opinion on it, I would rather see my guidance that, that comes to me come from the Treasury Department to the state.
Did that come from the Treasury Department?
From the municipal association.
Okay.
Uh, that's me.
Okay.
I mean, I could reach out to any elected official that I know supports this or that, and I can get three or four different answers, based on their political.
We'll get the, we'll get the two dollars from, from uh, from, from Treasury or at least from uh Transportation. Um, and I'll make sure that Jeff Shakert is, is notified or CC'd on it, so that you'll be getting it from them and the municipal association. But the real question is, the three things that we're talking about using that grant money, of all this that we've been through tonight, the, the real three things are staff bonuses, um, that more to meter reading thing in the comment. And all I'm saying is, let's take the more to re, meter reading thing out of that, um, out of those three and put it in that uh, in that bond, if people wanna have a bond. And it's not gonna, it's, it's not gonna change the, the uh, the amount that we pay back on that bond, because that actually, if, if what Ted's saying is true, will generate upwards to ten percent of revenue that we haven't even accounted for.
It will change the numbers on the bond, or you tend to take projects out of.
Well, no, 'cause none, none of the other projects in the, none of the other projects in the bond actually make money.
Non-expender of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is, what you're proposing is that we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to what we need to spend.
Three point nine million, or call it four million.
Right.
That's what you're.
Yeah, and, and then council has to be, be smart to say that part of that three to five percent revenue that's gonna be uh generated will go to uh, towards, part of that will go towards that bond. You can easily say that, and then, so there's no real impact by taking it out of it.
Can we guarantee that increase in revenue?
But Ted, why do you keep bringing it to us?
I know, I know.
Why do you keep bringing it to us?
I can guarantee you that, I'm saying.
Okay, any money, any money that is generated, because it's obviously gonna make money, or you wouldn't be trying to get it, you might have plans.
I'm not doing it for the increase in revenue, I, I keep saying that.
For that extra revenue, but it's gonna generate.
I'm doing it for the customer portal ability, for customers to be able to better monitor their water usage, I'm doing it for staff efficiency.
Is it gonna cost us money? Is it gonna ca, are we gonna lose money by doing it?
Again, we're not over reading, our meters are not over reading water.
It's gonna cost us money. You talk to a million people, you've been doing this for the last four or five years. You know it's gonna generate money, and all I'm saying is, the money that it generates, we need to put part of it towards the bond and part of it towards um, reinvesting in the community, in, in the infrastructure of the water system, which is, makes sense. You generating money from water, so put it back in there to improve the infrastructure of the water park, or the uh, the, the pipes in the ground, to pay off that debt, to pay for itself. Until it pays for itself, then you can redirect the money the way council so chooses. But take that out of the three things that uh, we're gonna use for uh, for that uh grant money. All cut in that.
So what if you put the, um, the full cost of the automated meter reading system into into the new, uh, refinancing of the revenue bond? And like you said, we don't have to, it'll be there, but we don't necessarily have to spend that money for that reason. But if we decide to do that, the money will be there.
I don't have a problem with that.
So if you did that, then the money you're talking about coming from this, um.
Grant, yeah.
Grant group or whatever we're getting, can be used for something else. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
So you're saying we borrow an additional seven hundred thousand dollars to let a million, to let a million and a half sit there?
So that, what do you mean a million and a half?
A million and a half for the, for the meter reading system.
No, once he, he's got the money, like she said, you got the money, if you wanna use it, use it.
Well, yeah, but that's.
So you're, so no, no money sitting on the table. You, you now have, you, you have one point five million, and Ted's gonna use that money, cause he wanna do it, he been wanting to do this project.
And then we, we increase, we increase the expenses out of our, um, enterprise fund to pay for that bond.
Exactly, but this thing is also gonna generate money.
Yes, but we don't have a clue how much.
It's gonna generate some money.
Yeah, what we expect it to, yeah.
So at least three, at least three percent.
Based on assumptions and historical data, that doesn't mean.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, wait, wait, wait. No, 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 no. Hold on, time out, Ted, Ted, time out.
Twenty-five thousand new dollars.
No, I'm not gonna let y'all do that, time out.
That's reality.
Wait, I'm not gonna let y'all do that, because what you, when you were selling it to us, you were selling it to us as it was gonna have anywhere from three percent to ten percent. Now, all of a sudden, now, all of a sudden, that's not, that's not clear, but it was clear when you were selling it.
I was saying that was possible.
Possible, that's all I'm saying, is that it's possible. And if, if the possibility becomes reality, then we use that money to service the, uh, part of the debt.
But if it does become reality, on the flip side.
We still have to pay for it, if it's not gonna come to reality, we shouldn't get it.
No, we don't have to pay for anything, our taxpayers do.
Right.
Uh, Mrs. Look, all right, may I, may I ask a quick question? All right, we're gonna pay two hundred and five thousand dollars a year for twenty years for three point two million dollars. So we're looking for another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is one quarter of that, which is roughly fifty thousand dollars a year, in payments. And we're gonna get rid of a meter reader who, with retirement and so forth, is worth how much per year?
Forty thousand.
It's gonna be around forty to forty-five.
Eighteen percent contribution to, wow, okay.
But I, I never heard, I never heard Ted say that he was gonna eliminate a position, are you?
We have two meter reader slots.
Right, but are you gonna eliminate a position?
I would probably eliminate one position.
No, okay, hold, hold, hold it. Let me.
No, I would not eliminate.
Mayor, if I may address this, council establishes and abolishes positions, is that correct, under the council manager form of government? Council has the authority to, if we wanna get rid of a chief of police, we just abolish the position. Is that correct, Mr.?
The mech, mechanism is through the budget.
Back, back where I say it's through the budget.
Well, okay, but, but the authority to do that, to change the budget.
You would approve a lower, you would approve, you could approve a lower amount.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't.
Now, listen to me, listen for a second.
The law reads establishes and abolishes positions.
Right.
It doesn't say changes the budget, it says council can establish or abolish positions or departments.
Inside the budget.
No.
No, it doesn't say that.
No, because not mention the budget.
You can reduce his budget, he can get rid of all the police except for the chief. So that makes no sense, you have to, you can eliminate the position of chief and then budget accordingly.
The law is very, it's very specific.
Doesn't that mean that he can't?
You can go ahead, the law, it says establishes or abolishes the position.
Right.
And that is, and I believe Mr. Lucknew will agree with that, and it doesn't have to be done through the budget. We could say we don't want these positions.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm not agreeing with this, right, I don't know if the law specifically states.
Obviously, we would like to have your consent to do that, but that's the issue, but.
I know where you're going with your point is, it would be, you're.
We have a safeguard to make sure that savings comes about.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
You don't have, it would, regardless of whether y'all can abolish or whether you can just choose not to fund, you're setting the amount of money for that, the, the salary and payroll for that department, so in essence, you're doing it either way. No, I, I'm, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing as well.
Yeah, I understand.
I, without knowing exactly that, the specific wording.
But, 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 you know, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for or against, uh, where the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars comes from. I am saying that, uh, it does look like it would be a very, um, valuable thing to have, the automated reading, meter reading system. It's just, uh, we're, we're getting bogged down in how to pay for it, and whether, and it would be very nice to look at the actual overall financials, but.
Well, Bob, you got a, you got a nice looking golf cart in your yard.
Not anymore, someone stole it.
Well, before you. Before, before.
And I was chastised, and I was chastised, I was chastised for having lax security on my premise.
Let's stay on.
The second time I was dying.
My, my point, my point was that you, that you, we always pay for the, the things that we want, but I'm sorry that happened to you, Bob. But, so to get back to, uh, to get back to, uh, to the councilwoman's point was, we need to pretty much know where, what the other council people feel, what she said was, to go ahead and put that, uh, one point five in the bond.
So the bond would be for the amount of cost performance, would be, you'd be a four million?
Four million. Three point eight, it wouldn't be three point eight.
Three point two, or you'd be at four million?
It wouldn't be five, yeah.
Without, so doing the bond without committing the funds?
Uh, well, I'm not in favor of going borrowing money, just so I have it in my pocket.
Well, I mean, he said that, he said that we did not do it right away, but, so I see that's what her point is, but yeah.
The bond, the bond amount would have to be established, what I've got to try and get to is if there's a consensus in utilizing the bond to get the wastewater treatment, I've gotta get a bond process started so that we can award wastewater treatment.
Well, I mean, we're not.
The question that I have is, that I, I really need direction on, is are people supportive of the automated meter reading system? And if it appears that most are, we, if we're refinancing, we need to refinance to have that money there.
Yeah, well, that's what she said, that's, that's what the councilwoman said, to, to refinance to have it there. I don't like the bond idea, I don't like the meter reading idea, but I will go along with it if it's put into the bond. That's just where.
Is there anyone else who does not like the meter reading idea?
And these, these are the places where you, where you talk about that, I mean, I would say I ain't.
That, that would give you, that's time for the numbers to hold with some more clarification as to, I guess, you know.
It won't be forthcoming.
Well, it will be forthcoming, what is, what is it that you want, put it on the record.
Yeah, that was a jab.
Put it, put it on the record.
I stand up here and get jabbed.
Wait. Put it on the record about what you want.
I, I'm, I'm.
Wait, what's, what is the information that Bob wants, that's what I need to know, good question. What, what is it, the information that Bob wants that he thinks he's not gonna get, please?
Lexia, cost analysis of, of how it's gonna be paid for, what the savings are gonna be.
Okay, so Ted, are you willing to work with?
I made my own point tonight, and I was trying to see if people were supportive or not, I wasn't coming with cost analysis or not.
But, but, we, we, you're gonna be willing to work with, uh, with the council people on coming up with, uh, with the cost analysis? Are you willing to work with them?
Yes.
No, no, that's.
Okay, so.
Councilman Hall doesn't think so, but yes, I prepared some things for it.
I've been waiting on data for six, for eight weeks.
Okay, so when, when can?
Kinda hard to give that eight years, six years on.
Wait, wait, so when, when can, when can the people that want that information?
No, 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 no. Excuse me. Council, we stay on, we're gonna stay on task, we stay on task.
Eight thousand dollars a year for water from Summit.